Welcome. I say we start two minutes early. Welcome to the May 7th, 2015 Olahtha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. We're so glad you're here. Thanks for taking the time and making the effort. Ms. Bondurit, will you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Felter.
Present.
Mrs. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McCune.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Shear.
Here.
Dr. Daniels.
Here. Great. Would you join me with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you all wear your goulashes? Is it what, goulashes? To come out or take your rowboat out here? It's pretty wet out there. Thanks for coming in spite of the rain. We have a couple special guests. We have Antonio. Antonio, can you wave at everybody? He's from the Shawnee Mission School District. He's a senior graduating this year. And he is here tonight to take notes for his government class. We're glad to have you, Antonio. And then we have a special graduate from 2011, Sam Felter, who happens to be my niece, who I looked out in the audience and saw. And she has finished her degree and she's coming tonight to observe what's going on here. So we're glad to have you, Samantha. She graduated from Olahtha East. We are going to start our presentations with Mr. Scott Mason telling us a little bit about Youth Court. Looking forward to it, Scott.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about one of our student development programs here in the district that is known as Olahtha Youth Court. A program that probably doesn't get the attention that it deserves, but hopefully we can change a little bit of that here tonight. With me tonight, I have Jennifer Bowden Miller, who is the facilitator of Olahtha Youth Court. I have a former Olahtha Youth Court student and two current students that are going to share their experiences with the program. We want to start out by just showing you a video, which kind of gives you a description of what Olahtha Youth Court is all about.
Since 1996, the Olahtha Youth Court has been serving students who are first-time offenders of minor crimes. In Youth Court, actual cases are decided in courtrooms completely operated by students. For participants, it offers a hands-on experience with the legal system. And for offenders, it offers an alternative to district court and the juvenile system. It has also inspired a whole new generation of students to become involved in the law profession.
The thing I like most about Youth Court is that it's student-run. I love the idea that the youth has the opportunity to speak out in, you know, the district and, you know, more than that, the community. We get to help our fellow classmates or just students in the Olahtha School District. And I think that's very, I think that's amazing.
I get an extreme sense of pride when I see a kid that has gone through our program and maybe joins us and becomes an officer or someone that turns their life around. There's also the opportunities that you gain self-confidence immensely through the program. If you're not confident when you start, there are little things. It may not be jumping up your first time and giving a closing, but there's little things that you build up to it and it can reinforce the, "I can speak in front of people. I can write good questions." And it really helps build that within the people that don't have it.
Well, Olahtha Youth Court kind of popped up through my dad. He's a translator here. So he invited me to join, come see, kind of try it out. And after that first night, I knew I wanted to be a part of it. It was, it looked so much fun and it looked like something that would benefit me.
I just love when I win a case. It just makes me feel really good and like, because I get nervous speaking in front of crowds. And like, I used to be a really shy person. And just being up in front of a crowd and then after it's over and hearing that I won, it just like reassures myself that like, okay, I can do this. And I don't know, it's just an awesome feeling.
While participating in Youth Court, officers attend meetings twice a month to discuss cases and work on strategy within each team. The program is flexible for students that have commitments and they are encouraged to participate as much as possible. Olahtha Youth Court is supported by volunteers and administrators who recognize that the program is a great tool for future student success.
This particular program, students can become involved as young as sixth grade. Once they were to graduate high school, not only have they opened up opportunities for themselves while they're in high school, but beyond high school, they've opened up opportunities for themselves. It's something that really looks good to prospective employers, to colleges, that they have been involved in something like this.
My sales pitch would be just to go. Go and try it. And, and just go, sit in the courtroom, be on a jury, participate in one Youth Court session, and decide if it's going to be a good fit for you. I think that if the students go, the parents go and see what's going on, that they will, they'll be hooked and they'll want to come back. And that's, that's what I've seen firsthand. Sometimes students, when we initially wanted, were going on the field trip, they were a little reluctant to go. And then once they went, they said, "When's the next time that we can go back?"
The Youth Court trials are held each month on the fourth Thursday at the Johnson County Courthouse in Olahtha. On the actual trial date, students will be involved in one of the following roles: judge, attorney, clerk, bailiff, or jury. Leadership development, service hours, and learning public speaking skills are just a few of the benefits that students have gained by participating in Olahtha Youth Court.
When you come to a meeting or to, you know, the Youth Court sessions at the courthouse, you know, you can just expect to be welcomed, to be respected. You know, your opinions are valued. You know, everybody's willing to hear what you have to say and we'll all accept you no matter what you have to contribute.
Olahtha Youth Court is all about helping someone else. It goes beyond you and it goes towards helping someone else. I think that's the most beneficial part. And that's the most important part out of everything. It's, it's a program where you can just be yourself, but at the same time, share your opinion. You get to meet a lot of friendly people and they become your family very instantly.
You have to put your effort into it, but you'll, like, you want to put effort into it because it's so interesting. And it catches your interest. It doesn't even seem like you're doing work. It just seems like fun and you just want to do it.
If you are interested in joining Olahtha Youth Court...
Um, this is what I think is a really neat program that we have here in the district. And it's a program that's going into its 20th year of operation. So it's, it's been a longstanding program. One of the things that I like with working with the students is you see a student that starts off and they're, you know, shy, maybe in a shell, not sure of themselves, and just seeing them blossom as they go through the program is pretty, pretty special. So it's, it's a, I think, a really neat program. Want to share a few things that are not covered in the video, just to kind of give you a little bit of information about, more information about the program. The first would be how the cases come to us. This is first and foremost a partnership that we have with the district attorney's office. And so essentially, this begins with an incident that occurs, generates a police report, which is forwarded to the district attorney's office. And if it meets the criteria for Olahtha Youth Court, then it'll be sent to us. The criteria basically are three things. First being it has to be an Olahtha student that's involved in the incident. The second thing is it has to be a first offense, because this is like a diversion program. So you sort of get one chance, more or less, to go through Olahtha Youth Court. And the third thing, it has to be a relatively minor offense. We're talking about, you know, misdemeanor-type offenses that will qualify. So that's how the cases come to us. Once we get the cases, we gather the students together. We usually meet at least twice a month. We form what are called trial teams. That involves a lead prosecutor, a lead defense attorney, usually two or three assistant prosecutors and defense attorneys. They develop the strategy for the case. They interview the defendant, which is the client, and they prepare for trial. Trial, and this is what occurs on the fourth Thursday of each month. And this is really where I say the action occurs. This is when we get a chance to, more or less, take over the courthouse. If you come to an Olahtha Youth Court, you will see a bustle of activity. You'll see students everywhere. And really, students run the show. As the video mentioned, students are in every role in terms of judge, in terms of attorneys, in terms of jurors. And so adults are there in the support role, but really are more or less in the background. So the case is put on, the jury then renders a decision, and then we get to what is called the sanctions element of it. Essentially, every defendant that goes through Youth Court has agreed to plead guilty. And so the Youth Court process is to determine the appropriate sanctions, the number of community service hours, or if there should be some other requirements that a defendant should have to meet. If the defendant successfully meets those requirements, then their case is dismissed from the district attorney's office. If not, then it gets referred back and they have to go through that process. So that's kind of an overview of what that looks like. Want to give you a little bit of an idea of the types of cases that we typically would see in Youth Court. You can, if you can see from the graph, three-fourths of the cases fall under three categories: disorderly conduct, theft, battery. A lot of theft cases are your typical shoplifting-type case. If a student is shoplifting at Walgreens or at Oak Park Mall, very likely if it's a first offense, it ends up in Youth Court. Disorderly conduct could involve a student fight, that sort of thing. So those are the majority of cases. We also have a few that fall under trespassing or damage to property. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of the type of cases that we see. Here's a quote from one of our students that's in the program, and I think is pretty typical. You know, the confidence building. And that's something that we certainly try to encourage and as we work with the students. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Bowden Miller, who's going to share a little bit about the student development.
Thank you. What will students gain by participating in Olahtha Youth Court? Leadership. This is an opportunity for the students to showcase the skills they are currently learning in their leadership classes. The older students are great mentors for the younger students who are eager to learn from them and work with them. Public speaking. Students start to develop the necessary skills and confidence needed to present information to large crowds. We continuously encourage students to step outside of their comfort zone and into their courage zone. Courtroom skills. The students are given full responsibility to see the cases through from start to finish. Student defense teams work directly with the defendant's and his or her family members. We guide them through bolstering their courtroom presentations during our monthly meetings for the purpose of professional development. Friendships. Fun fact, all of our middle schools and high schools have students participating in the program. In addition, we do have students from neighboring districts and homeschooled students who have decided to join our team. Service hours. Well, obviously, these are important to our students for many reasons. Several classes, organizations, clubs require service hours. Service hours also earned will become extremely relevant to our students when they start applying for scholarship apps in the future. And finally, service to others. If any of you were to ask our students why they take time away from their busy schedules, they would probably all say the same thing. All of the time and effort is worth it if we can help students make a better choice in the future. Student participation. I just want to give you guys an overview of that. We track participation on a calendar year basis. So the numbers to the left represent the number of student Youth Court officers and defendants that we see in a current year. And as you can see, for 2015, we have numbers January through April and we're at 211. The numbers on the right represent all students that come through the door for the Youth Court program in a calendar year. These numbers include middle school leadership class field trips. We host several of those. Elementary field trips, girl and boy scout troops. Students also who are just from across the district who are looking to earn community service hours. And as you can see, we're already currently at 478, January through April. And finally, service hours. We talked about how important those are. As you can see, students have earned a tremendous amount of service hours with us through the years. These hours reflect the dedication and commitment of Olahtha Public School students. Currently, we're at 1,636 hours earned, January through April, 2015. And with that, I think I'm going to have a couple of experts come up and introduce themselves to you.
Hello, I'm Grace Teeger and I'm currently a sophomore at Olahtha East High School. I first heard about the Olahtha Youth Court program when Ms. Bowden Miller actually came to my leadership class in sixth grade. And she talked about how wonderful and what a great benefit the Olahtha Youth Court has on students in our community. With my personality of always wanting to be right and always wanting to argue, which my parents can probably testify to, I knew I wanted to join and I knew law was something I wanted to get into. I first started out as a bailiff. Then I moved up to a lead defense attorney. And now I'm currently one of the youngest judges of the Olahtha Youth Court program, which I'm still currently a judge. But Olahtha Youth Court is more than just winning a case. It's a second chance. The student defendants who go through the Olahtha Youth Court process get a second chance to better themselves in the future. Olahtha Youth Court has not only taught me to be confident in myself, to learn public speaking, to learn how the courtroom works, but more importantly, Olahtha Youth Court has taught me to be a better person.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Bowden Miller and I'm currently a sixth grader at Chisholm Trail Middle School. In the beginning, I honestly didn't think that I would be able to do Youth Court because it can be a little scary to get up and talk in front of people. I'm glad I, that I decided to give it a try because having the opportunity to do a presentation like this is getting easier for me. This program can help, helps all kinds of students in our school district. The most important part is that the student defendants get an opportunity to clear their name and start over after making a bad mistake. I have tried almost every position in Youth Court. I have been a jury member, bailiff, defense attorney, and prosecuting attorney. When asked why I got involved in Youth Court, I don't say just because of service hours or how much fun Youth Court can be. Don't get me wrong, both of these things are important, but the big picture for me is helping students learn from their mistakes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brent Jepson. I'm a current attorney in Prairie Village with the Halbrook Law Firm. But the reason why I'm here tonight is, back in 2000, I started in the Olahtha Youth Court program. Did that since sixth grade all, all the way through senior year. And it was kind of one of those things that, in sixth grade, I kind of followed my brother at the time, who's three years older than me. So he was part of the Youth Court program. And I came along one time and just decided, hey, this is something that's really cool. I want to get involved. It was great. When I got involved in the program, I got a little bit more feel about, you know, kind of the legal process and being in a courtroom environment and making those sorts of presentations and got that experience out of it. And it just kind of furthered me wanting to go into, into law and be an attorney. Through that, I had the opportunity to do some job shadowing beyond Olahtha Youth Court and present, you know, cases in Olahtha Youth Court and really develop the skills that you need for, for presentation, for advocacy, and being able to help other people. And it goes beyond just being in the courtroom while you're there and doing that job. But it's also meeting with other kids that are the defendants, meeting with, say, police officers, meeting with school principals, others that are involved in the particular case, and kind of developing that analysis, developing that strategy, and learning those skills. I can say, you know, standing here today, the skills that I developed through Youth Court not only wanted, made me want to develop further and become an attorney, but have helped me to get to the point where I'm at today. I can also say on the flip side of, of having prosecuted for, for Johnson County as a student intern and then prosecuting in Wyandotte County, that this sort of program is, is very beneficial for the students that are defendants as well. And having that opportunity to go through a program with other students and, and not just be, you know, facing adults for whatever your sanction may be, but having students tell you, hey, this is what you need to do to get better. This is how things should be done. And having that positive experience out of that. So I, I think, you know, being an Olahtha resident today, my wife being a teacher in Olahtha, that I feel that this program allows students in Olahtha an advantage over many other programs out there. I feel that having my own experience within that is something that you just can't find in many other outlets. There's, there's not much else out there that you can go in there, develop those skills, help others out, and have that positive impact on the community. So I thank you for your time tonight. And I appreciate the program.
So in closing, just a couple more points I would bring up. First being, you know, while it's certainly geared toward the law and that's the setting, it's a program that's really not exclusively for students that are interested in law. We have several students that go on to be teachers, doctors, other professions. It's really more focused on skill development, public speaking, analytical skills, problem-solving, teamwork, those sort of things. And so it's not just a law program. It's one of the things I like to stress. And the other thing I like to do is just invite any of you to come out on a Thursday evening, if you have time. Again, we are there. We operate year-round. It's not just during the school year. This is a program that operates during the summer as well as during the school year. And just come out and I think you'll be thoroughly impressed. And with that, I will stand for questions.
That's great. Any questions or comments? Scott, can you talk a little bit about a case? Is it, does it take a month? Do you go, like, I'm, I'm wondering, like, how involved do the students get? Do you meet a couple times during the month and then hear it on that Thursday and then it's done?
Well, what we typically, you know, let's say there's a shoplifting that occurs at Oak Park Mall or wherever. That gets sent to the district attorney's office. They decide to prosecute. They forward that to us, to the, to the Youth Court program. We usually get those right around the beginning of the month typically. And if we get it, usually by about the first week, we usually will hear that case at that month's Youth Court. And so, and the decision and everything is made that evening. So between the time we get it and the time we do Youth Court, we've got to interview the client. We've got to bring the teams together. We've got to review the case, you know, help them formulate the strategy. So it all takes place in probably two weeks is the process.
During the school, during the school day?
We meet with them right after school typically.
Right after, okay. And so about how many defendants do you see a year?
We probably run around six or so cases in a typical month. They kind of fluctuate, so. And we run 10 months out of the year, so 60 cases, give or take.
Following on to your example, the shoplifting case, if the person is convicted, what would be a typical sentence?
Well, in, in the Youth Court setting, or you mean...
The Youth Court.
You know, that's, and that's essentially the heart of Youth Court is you would have the prosecutor, for example, arguing that they should get 50 hours of community service and peer mentorship. You would have a defense attorney maybe arguing for 20 hours. And so it's going to usually be something in between those. And, you know, the closer it is to either side, you know, then the, the defense feels like they won. If it's 25 hours, the prosecution thinks they won. If it's 45, so that's typically how it would play out.
What if they're arguing not guilty?
You know, that's an interesting question. You know, technically, when they agree to come into the program, because it's a diversion program, they have agreed with the district attorney's office to plead guilty to the underlying offense. We will occasionally get parents or students to show up and, you know, the night of Youth Court and say, well, they're really not guilty. It wasn't their fault. And we've had a few trials that we've kind of done in more of a guilty, non-guilty setting. But we usually, it's more of a sanctions argument typically.
Do you have rules about students knowing the defendants? Do they have to, do they get a jury?
Yeah, that, that's one of the things. When we first seat the jury, we'll ask the defendant, well, we ask both sides, the prosecution and the defense. Are there any jury members that you're a friend, a long acquaintance with? And they have a right to strike jurors. It doesn't happen very often, but occasionally a juror would be struck because of a past friendship or conflict. So it does happen.
Aside the obvious success with the, the students that participate in it, does the DA's office give you any data like what the, what the repeat offenders are? What we've kept people from?
Not that, you know, we don't typically get any reports back. It may be something we can ask for. Since, again, we only see them one time because once they've gone through the program, they're no longer eligible, so. And, and very often, it'll be an incident which will occur and it may be multiple parties, but only one party is eligible for Youth Court. So we only see the one party.
Great program.
Any other questions? Do we only take Olahtha school students? Or what if there was someone that was homeschooled or private school in our community?
We allow, as you saw in the video, there was a student from Blue Valley. So we do allow students to participate in the program that are not necessarily Olahtha students. And we do allow also homeschool students. The defendants are typically just Olahtha students.
Thank you so much. Great presentation, guys. Your skills are already sharp. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Scott. All right, and Dr. Erin Dugan is going to unveil our middle school iPad rollout. This is exciting.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to spend just a few minutes because our excitement is brimming over because iPads were delivered to teachers this week. And so our excitement, I wanted to share some pieces of it with you. Not only the excitement, a lot of the communication, the things we're doing to get messages out to students and teachers and parents. So again, I want to roll you through some things. I think we gave some handouts to you so you would see a couple of the items. And then I want to thank a lot of people and get us excited for what's coming up this summer and this fall. School news is hitting mailboxes, 50,000 of them. And we're thrilled that the Middle School iPad Technology Initiative is on the cover with a great redhead middle school kiddo using an iPad. So again, sharing community-wide, not only the excitement, but some of the details, not only in this great decision you guys made, but how this is going to look in our middle schools. We've done tons of communicating. I can't thank Maggie Cole and her department enough, or Erica Darrington and the graphic communications folks that have helped us really turn this around quickly to get out good information quickly. Big posters, to your left is big posters that are in each of our middle schools. There's four or five of them just talking about this, what we're calling Power Up, which is our Middle School Technology Initiative. In the middle, there is a brochure, brochures that went home to every current fifth grader, sixth grader, and seventh grader, just about the general information. Hey, you're going to be getting an iPad. Things parents need to know, things we'll be doing. And then we handed each student, the one to the right here as I'm looking at it, which was a flyer that said, hey, get excited. Your iPad too is coming soon. And on the back, it said, hey, harass your parents. You got to get an Apple ID set up. We had a selfish reason to get them excited because we also need to get some things in place. We've done lots of parent communication because we think this is important. And we heard from our community, they had questions right away. What about digital citizenship? How will this get set up? What if we don't want to bring it home? Lots of those. And some of these questions, we're going to learn about as we go, but many of those we've thought through and we wanted to push out good information to parents. So there's an example. We did city watches. Each middle school has sent out information via city watch to the parents. They've also gotten a trifold brochure with lots of information and frequently asked questions. And we produce those both in English and Spanish and have put those not only out to families via city watch. We also did a direct mailing to all our current fifth, sixth, and seventh graders with not only the brochure, but also a letter. And there's a sample there. More information about the initiative and also some directions. Get an Apple ID set up. We need to get each student kind of registered with an iPad so that we can have those loaded and ready to hand out this fall so we can really start the school year up with this initiative. We're also pushing a large campaign called Keep the Case On. We've learned a lot from the elementary initiative and... the elementary initiative, and the student iPads with the great cases, they're not getting broken. Different maybe than some of our staff that didn't have the case. And so we have now a case for all of our student iPads and our staff iPads, and they're unlikely to break if you keep the case on. So you'll be hearing that nonstop from a preventative kind of campaign. So this flyer was handed out with the, to the teachers with their iPad, with a real visual reminder for them to keep the case on. So it said, teacher training started this week. All the middle school certified staff received their iPads. And then I think three, and there's one going on right now at Frontier Trail, three of the middle schools, Frontier Trail's the fourth this week, a three-hour training starts right after school, introduces some kind of iPad basics. Many of our staff are past that point. Now we're talking about, what's this mean for classroom instruction? How do we enhance? How do we improve our instruction in student learning using an iPad? So it's not all about the power button and using apps, but it's what's our philosophy going forward. Again, pretty excited, folks. I think that's Pioneer Trail, and I want to say Prairie Trail were the last two. There's lots of iPads and lots of smiling teachers. So they're as excited as we are. Continued teacher training, Summer Conference this year has over 50 Summer Conference training sessions from staff, for our staff and all of our staff, K-12. It's not limited to middle school, because elementary teachers certainly, from certified Apple trainers in all aspects, in content, in math, in applications, in graphic arts, visual arts, so many things. And so we're really using that. Summer Conference and folks are pretty excited, and lots of folks signed up for that. And we are already planning now how to infuse iPad and technology use through our content area of professional development next year. So when our math teachers all get together at the middle school, they're talking about good math content and pedagogy, but they're also talking about how technology can interact with that. And that'll be an ongoing piece of our professional development going forward. Things we're still working on, because we're working fast and furious, we'll have a student and parent technology handbook that they get that walks through lots of the questions, provides more in-depth information, talks to parents about FaceTime with devices at home, what's appropriate, how to monitor that, some suggestions, talks to students about good digital citizenship, and our expectations for some of that. And so getting some of that stuff in print right now, and we'll have that ready. Maggie Kolb and Connie Smith are helping with an orientation video that will require all students and parents to watch, that reminds them of many of these same concepts. Lots of information out of July registration. Back-to-school night presentations at the middle schools will be chock full of, so your student's got an iPad and what that means, and, and questions they're going to have. And we'll have lots of experts there to assist. This concept of digital citizenship for students, some of the early questions we're getting from parents is, will you help my student be safe with this device? What do I need to know to help my student be safe with this device? And so we'll be spending a full day at each of the middle schools as the students will go from hour to hour in what we're calling now Digital Citizenship iPad Palooza. And all our staff and students will be engaged in curriculum about digital citizenship that will then follow throughout the year. But they'll get a heavy dose of that to start, and parents will get lots of information on that as well. And then we'll be bringing to you soon, it's time to update and revise the Board of Education's policy on acceptable student use of technology. It's a policy, I want to say, late 90s. So maybe we're going to get in there, and, and now's the perfect time. Devices are different, our expectations for use, and especially now that students are taking them home. So we'll be bringing to you and recommending to you a revision to the acceptable student use technology policy. So lots of excitement. I mean, teachers are thrilled, students are excited. Fifth graders ran home with this flyer that I'm getting an iPad Air 2, and are pretty excited about middle school. So we're excited for them, and just lots going on. So I'd take any questions, but really wanted just to share the excitement. Again, thank you guys for your approval and letting us move forward. Questions? Comments?
I have just maybe one question. I know our students are extremely bright. As far as them circumventing, you know, around and browsing with these devices, is there restrictions on the device?
There are certainly when they're in our schools and on our network. And, and we feel good about that, and that's as stringent as it is with all of our computer devices. And some of that will carry over again while they're home and their ability to get on stuff, and we'll be working with parents. Do we know that middle school kids can figure out how to, how to bypass lots of those things? We do, and, and we're going to continue to work with them on that good citizenship, the consequences for that, and really with their parents on. Just like any digital device that's at home, it's going to require supervision. And, and we think the more parents understand that and are talking to their kids about that. There's some nice safeguards, but we certainly can't guarantee that a kiddo's not going to figure a route around, as they do with their cell phones currently, and the iPads they have at home currently. But we're on it, and that's a lot of the questions we're trying to answer for families right now and, and help them feel better. Should a family not feel good, do not want that device at home? There will be an option to check it in at the library at the end of the day, and we'll keep it safe and get it right back to the student. We want kids taking it home, because, home, because we think that access and, and that extension of the learning environment through the iPad's important. But certainly, if a family is not comfortable, we have an option.
Dr. Dugan, this is a, a great initiative, and it's exciting to know that we're putting all this technology out into the kids' hands. Just, what is the number of iPads that we, we're going to be distributing? And then what is the total we have out between elementary and, and middle school now? I know it's going to be a big number, and I'm just kind of excited to hear about it.
We purchased, I, I, I think it was right at 9,300 for the elementary initiative. And that included, we're self-insuring those, so we purchased a few extra for loss and breakage and, and growth, because we know we've got more students coming. And then we purchased 8,000 for this middle school initiative. That's in addition to almost 1,000 that we had purchased prior to the elementary initiative. So we've added a lot of devices to our network in the last 18, 24 months.
One of the other things that I'd gotten some questions about at some of the site council meetings, they were talking about some of the families that didn't have Wi-Fi at home. And, and one of the things that I was told, and I just want to validate that, is that a great thing about these iPads is that there's going to be a lot of the apps that don't need the Wi-Fi. So they're going to be able to take them home and still be able to do some of the work and things such as that, that they have access to here, even if they don't, even if they can't have Wi-Fi in their homes.
Right. And a lot of documents can be put on the iPad, dropped in the library in iBooks. So they go home, they pull that up, things that don't require Wi-Fi. Comcast customers, and we're pushing out lots of that information to our community. They offer families a $9 a month, really discounted rate for some Wi-Fi access. We're pushing out lots of that great information and really partnering with Comcast on that. But certainly, there will be options for students that don't have that access, to either have that stuff already kind of loaded on to their iPad, that then they can pull and access, for sure. So we think it'll work for those that do have access to gain information, and those that don't have that already loaded.
One of the things I note on there, that if, if they lose it, they have to pay for the replacement before they get a new one. The, my, my question is, with the, you know, great number of free and reduced we have here, are there going to be scholarships available for those people that can't afford it? And, you know, what's the, what's the criteria for that? And if, for some reason, they don't get another one, is that going to impede their, their learning ability?
Sure. Great questions. And the ones our principals asked right away, and, and really advocating for their students and said, hey, we know this might happen. So we won't put any barriers in place for a student that is unable to replace it from having that instructional tool available to them. So we'll find a way to make sure they have the instructional tool they need. We're going to be teaching responsibilities. We certainly are spending a lot of time visiting with families about how important it is to take good care of this device. Again, the option to not take it home if they feel like they can't care for that device. Families that have kind of, if the student's been negligent, they are responsible for replacing it. And our families that can pay, we'll ask them to do that. And those that can't, we'll find scholarships or funding mechanisms. But we'll get replacements in all kids' hands, because they're going to need them in this new age of learning in each of their classrooms. So that's a great question.
Having gone through a few kids myself, what happens the second time?
That they lose the device. And we'll be looking at things. And again, we're going to really rely on our principals who manage discipline and consequences and context of those situations. They may lose the privilege to take it home. They may have to check it in at the library at the end of the day. You know, the good news with losing iPads is we'll teach them a lot about Find My iPad. There are some things with the devices now that will help us. And, and there's a lot of that to help students understand and learn. But we'll certainly work through lots of that. And this first year will present us lots of opportunities to learn and work through some of those. But we're not going to put any things in place that keep devices from kids.
We could maybe send them to youth court if we had to.
Good option.
That's might be what pays.
We just doubled their docket.
Going back to Mr. McKean's question about security, you know, when they get home, can they set up a separate identity, a separate username? And, you know, in the case of, of something we sense that is going to go wrong or something like that, is the history, does that iPad belong to us as a school district still? So the iPad, the history on that iPad is accessible to us?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it possible to set up two different iTunes accounts off the same device? Absolutely. And for many, for folks in, in industry that use an iPad for work at home, that's, it's built to be that kind of flexibility. But no, they belong to us, and we have the ability to see what's on them and, and lock things and, and all those kind of security measures.
Great. Anything else?
Well, just one more, Dr. Dugan, and this for Rita also, and I, you know, it might sound like a broken record. So, so we've rolled things out to the elementary school. It's going very well. Getting ready to do it at the middle school. I'm excited about that. And then again, at the high school. And I know that we don't have an initiative in place right now for that. But just for clarification, so even at the high school level, we do allow them to bring their own devices today, and they have access to that. So even while, because I've got a child that's going off to high school now, I was very disappointed that she didn't get an iPad. But, but that was, that was one of the questions I've heard from some of the parents also, is that, well, what are we doing for them? They're the ones that are getting closer to college, closer to getting out to the work life, but we're not providing them with the technology that they need to be able to learn from. But we have that ability today, and we'll continue that going forward, correct?
And keep in mind, there's a group studying to determine what is that device that we're looking at for the high school. And so that process is underway. And, and there's certainly different variables to what product, device, a high schooler would need compared to a middle school. So I also have an eighth grader headed to the high school who's like, dang! But she has a device she can take on into school and, and can get great access, and that works really well in the high schools. But at the same time, that's under study with lots of high school teachers trying some different devices. And we'll be, we'll be bringing a recommendation to you guys at some point here soon as to what the high school initiative's going to look like, with exciting brochures and posters and for it as well.
And Dr. Dugan, was that, was that included in the bond 2013, the high school? The high school initiative?
You know, at the time when we studied, we, we knew we wanted to infuse more technology into our district. And so in coming up with the bond dollars, we had a, a total figure that we were shooting for. But that included some replacement of network and, and other hardware. And so, yeah, we're stretching as far as we can, but we'll have to use capital outlay funds as well, maybe.
Good.
Bond plus.
Bond plus.
Bond plus.
That's good. Thank you so much.
Just a-
Oh, one more, one more.
Just a quick question for Dr. Berry, since with the, with recent elections here and the fact that the average age of our board just dropped in half. And the younger generation is, is more used of the iPad. Will we expect to see an iPad here next, come next fall?
You know, we've talked about that, with proper training, and if you sign off on it, we might be able to do. Keep the case on, right?
Thank you. He can only sign off if he makes it through the night after that remark. How about we knock out an action consent agenda real quick? 5.01 through 5.10. Any dialogue or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Where we?
Action consent, 5.01 through 5.10.
The older responsible board members know where we are.
I, I just had a quick question, actually. Some of the student trips are in our consent agenda, and some are not. How do we make that distinction?
It's usually due to timing. If something needs action, or it's because of a national competition they're going to, and it just, you know, depends in terms, sometimes it's the funding source as well, if it has some district dollars as well.
Okay.
And since it was my monthly review of the year, counts payable, just to make sure y'all knew that I actually did it, I had a question that I proposed to, to Dr. Berry. One of the checks that was for something like $300,000, uh, for sales, for tax, uh, sales tax. Or wait, before tax, I forget what it was, and I'd asked John to respond, because I thought we were tax exempt, and that seemed like a big chunk of money to be panning out for taxes if we're tax exempt.
Right. I owe you a little bit of an apology, because I didn't answer exactly correctly. A portion of those bills are for property tax. If we have undeveloped land, until we are 24 months out from using it for our intended use, then it receives all the full tax levies against it at agricultural rates. So it's kind of the lowest possible, but we actually pay our own levies to ourselves on undeveloped land. The remaining properties we pay for appears to be a property tax, but it's really any property with Johnson County wastewater is billed on the tax bill for those services based on the prior year usage. In Olathe, we get a walk, we get a sewer bill every month. If it's Johnson County wastewater, it's, comes through at the same time on the tax bills. So I apologize for that, but a good portion of that is our wastewater bill for the year.
So the answer is, we are tax exempt, except for the few pieces of undeveloped land.
Such as the two high school sites?
And then an elementary site that we have, and a middle school site that we have.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question, because I, I wasn't aware of that. So, thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Well, we, I got, am I done?
Oh, I'll swap then, Mike.
On, and this may take a little bit of time. I don't know if we want to do it afterwards, but just on 5, 510, uh, let's see here. Oh, as far as restraint, I just, I guess I just wanted sort of a, a, somebody to sort of explain to the public and to me.
Yeah, Dr. Dugan could come up and, and explain that.
And explain exactly what it is.
Explain what emergency safety interventions are. Seclusion and restraint, kind of are self-explanatory by titles. Seclusion, they're negative connotation words. But in the state of Kansas, there are regulations that say you can only seclude a student or restrain a student if they are an inherent danger to themselves or others. And it can only be used as a last resort, and if all other interventions and positive supports have failed. And so they've changed the name of seclusion restraint, restraint to emergency safety interventions. And so they've now built regulations that are actually being reviewed currently, and there's a possibility some, for some even stronger guidelines and regulations. But part of those regulations that were new a year ago added that districts needed to publish the state regulations, and so that's what's in the code of conduct. We had to document and, and make sure we were doing good training of our staff, so they understood the restrictions around seclusion and restraint. And then we also have to submit our data, every building, every student, every incident of either seclusion or restraint to the State Department of Education. And they run audits, and have come to Olathe and done audits, and we're very compliant in all aspects. And so we missed the deadline when the regulations were finally published to print in last year's code of student conduct. And so we're now putting it in this year's.
And I guess one of the, one of the concerns I had was also, one of the statements made was all staff must have training designed to meet their needs as appropriate to their duties and potential need for emergency staff interventions. I guess, what are some examples? And what's that, you know, and once again, an unfunded mandate for us, what's that cost us?
Sure. A, a couple of things. We do three different levels of training. And I'll go back and say, some of this we were doing anyway, because we felt we wanted staff trained anytime they were going to restrain a kiddo for their own safety and for certainly the safety of a student. But our first level of training, our Department of Special Ed did a voiceover PowerPoint, that staff that are peripheral, that probably aren't going to ever either seclude or restrain a student, but would see it to make them knowledgeable if we only use it when and after other things have failed, and it's not a punishment. It's about a 10-minute training time, and the only cost of that would be the staff time that put it together and staff time. Then the second level is our teachers in our schools that are more likely than to be on teams with the teachers of students. Programs are, programs for our students that are emotionally disturbed, have autism, severe cognitive impairments, more likely to have some behaviors or inherent safety issues that might require this. There's an hour-long training- an hour-long training they receive, again, put on by the Department of Special Ed. Administrators attend that. Anyone that would be on a team for one of those students. And then probably our most expensive training, but we've been doing this for 15 years, we do intervention called CPI. So we have five CPI trainers. Let's see if I can do this. Crisis Prevention Intervention. And it does two things. It teaches staff de-escalation techniques, which you use first trying to de-escalate a student. But then it teaches proper, what I call safe holds, which is restraint, or when and how to put a student in a safe place or seclude them. So we have five trainers that cost us a couple of thousand dollars a year to keep them certified. They get a small stipend for this specialty. And then they provide really in-depth training, day-long training to any staff that are going to go hands-on, either in a safe hold or put a student in a safe place. So 13,000 maybe to run our CPI program. But again, we were doing that prior to the regulations. That's just good practice.
But a lot of staff time.
A lot of staff time. The documentation, those pieces, those kinds of hidden costs, that's a lot of staff time. Again, that, they just audited us and we met full compliance in all of our buildings related to how we document, how we train, and that the decisions we've made on students that we either restrain or seclude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm done.
Awesome. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.10 as presented. Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Mr. Shear. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. It's time to take a break. And if you guys will join us at seven o'clock, we'll be back for recognitions and public comments. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. We've got a full house. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, Maggie.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. As you can see from this packed house, we have numerous recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Scoon over from Community Development to come forward, along with Scott Mason and Jennifer Bodenmiller from our youth court program. Tonight, we recognize the Olathe Clockwinders Optimists for their ongoing support of the district's Olathe Youth Court Program. Optimist volunteers give up several hours of their time each month to help facilitate the program's sanction hearings, which are held on the fourth Thursday of each month at the Johnson County Courthouse. Duties include courtroom supervision, hall monitoring, preparing defendant paperwork following the verdict, escorting family members to the checkout rooms, and assisting district staff members throughout the evening. The Clockwinders Optimist Club also generously donates $1,000 each year to be given to graduating seniors who participate in youth court. We'd like to recognize the following members of the Clockwinders Club for their tremendous support of the youth court program. Each member has dedicated many years of appreciated service to ensure the continued success of this program. When I call your name, please come forward. John Cassidy, 15 years of service. Myron Shafie, 15 years. Greg Herbert, six years. Michael Ramsey, 17 years, and Sheri Ramsey, 17 years. Thank you for all of your support. Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to recognize Sue Rippey from Olathe Northwest High School. Sue, if you could come forward, along with Principal Gwen Pass. We have a bit of a traffic jam. Sorry about that. Sue is a college biology teacher and was recently selected for representation into the National Teachers Hall of Fame as a member of the class of 2015. She is one of five teachers from around the country to be chosen for this honor. She has been a teacher for 32 years and was named Kansas Teacher of the Year in 2000. Congratulations, Sue, on all of your success. And I know your husband is here as well. We'd love for him to wave and be recognized as well. Sue, would you like to say a few words?
They did this to me two weeks ago at city council meeting. I should be ready for this. I, I just wanted to publicly thank the, the board and, and the Olathe School District for, for all the support you have given me in the last 12 years because I'm, I'm not able to receive an award like this without a lot of leadership behind me. And I'm so very, very appreciative of that and so very proud of the Olathe School District. So thank you all very much.
For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Deputy Superintendent Allison Banikowski, Martha Gable, District Fine Arts Coordinator, and Randy Dietrich, Orchestra Teacher, to come forward. The Olathe Public Schools have been recognized for their outstanding commitment to music education with a Best Communities for Music Education designation. Olathe joins 387 districts from across the country in receiving this prestigious distinction for 2015. And Olathe is the only school district in Kansas to receive this award this year. Music education touches all levels in the Olathe Public Schools, from general music classes to choirs, bands, orchestras, and more. Through music, students are able to perform in a variety of venues from concert halls to the marching field. Thank you for your music leadership in our district and congratulations. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize a very special group of district seniors. This year, the district had 16 seniors named National Merit Finalists, the most in district history in one year. To become a finalist, a student must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by the high school principal, and her, or earn high SAT scores. National Merit finalist status is a prestigious honor among high school seniors. And we'd like the following to please come forward. From Olathe East High School, Erica Chang, Emma Clark, Sarab Hourhali, Adam Khan, Angela Lee, and Ken Sri, along with Principal Bill Weber. From Olathe North High School, Greg Bixler, Monell Brink, Wyatt Hikes, David Nelson, and Kaylee Penn, along with Principal David Morford. From Olathe Northwest High School, Bonnie Dowd, Ben Harper, and Curtis Huff, along with Principal Gwen Pass. And from Olathe South High School, Isaiah Hastings and Kelly Van Winkle, along with Principal Phil Clark. Congratulations to you all. Our next recognition is of Cooper Yurby. Cooper, if you could come forward, along with Principal David Morford. We're going to go on to Alexis Buff from Olathe North. Alexis, if you could come forward, as well as David Morford. Alexis is a senior at Olathe North and a member of the 21st Century Sports Medicine and Exercise Science Program. And she was recently named the 2015 Junior Volunteer of the Year at Shawnee Mission Medical Center. She was given this honor in awards banquet earlier this spring. Congratulations to you, Alexis. And is your family here tonight? We'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Next, we'd like to recognize students in our Culinary Arts Program. It's been another 20, it's been another terrific year for our 21st Century Culinary Arts Program. Would Mike Chef, would Chef Mike Christowski from Culinary and Chef Phil Shaw from Management please come forward, along with your students, and Building Administrator Kathy Musgrave? This is the 10th year in a row that the Culinary Arts Program has had students qualify for nationals. Earlier this year, the culinary and management student teams won in their divisions at the Kansas Pro Start Invitational. In late April, both teams competed at the National Pro Start Invitational, and the culinary team placed first in the nation. Both teams dedicated hundreds of hours of practice after school from January through April. Congratulations to you on all of your successes. Congratulations. And are your families here tonight? We'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. And our final recognition tonight goes to the Olathe North Eagleats Dance Team. If you could all come forward, along with Principal David Morford and your coach Sarah Heptig. The team has had some outstanding accomplishments this year at regional and national competitions. At the Kansas Spectacular Competition, the varsity team was selected for the Outstanding Team Award, which was voted on by all the other teams. And the varsity team was also selected for the first Wow! Performance Award and was selected as a judge's favorite to perform at the award ceremony. Most recently, the team placed second in the Varsity Palm Division at the National Dance Alliance National Competition. Congratulations to you all on these wonderful accomplishments. And let's have your parents stand and be recognized as well. Congratulations. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
All right. While everybody is exiting, that's fine. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor their time and not notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that the speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. At this time, I don't believe that we had anybody registered. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to address us this evening? Seeing none? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shear. Let's move on to 6.01, under action bids, contracts, and agreement. We're at 6.01 is curriculum and textbooks for driver's education. Questions? Motion?
I move to approve the curriculum and recommended textbook purchase of school textbooks for driver's educations from Pearson for $20,204 as presented.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mr. McCune. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Great. 6.02, textbooks, international language. You know, I'm looking, we've got a few textbooks. Would you guys be opposed to combining some of them?
Madam President, if there's not any questions, I'd move for approval for 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, and 6.05.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Debbie Daniels, for 6.02 through 6.05 for textbooks. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Great. 6.06, resilient gymnastics flooring, I'm sorry, gymnasium flooring installation cost for Countryside Elementary. Dialogue or questions?
Dr. Barry, is it, this is the, is this the type of flooring we're starting to put in all the schools? Is this just for my own, is it the same thing we've been doing in the hallways? We've had it in some of our schools, but this will be new for the elementary. But the price has come down enough that we can consider it. So we're going to try it at an elementary rather than carpet. We think it'll even increase our gym rentals and so forth because it's a little bit more flooring that we can use in a variety of ways that way.
Okay.
Motion?
I would move to approve 606 as presented. Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
6.07, trade bids for Olathe East and Olathe North, auditorium sound and lighting upgrades.
It's part of the aging facilities upgrade through the 2013 bond, two auditoriums that have not been touched and will need some upgrades.
I move to accept the recommendation as presented for 6.07. Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Poland, a second by Amy Martin. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
6.08, wireless.
Dr. Barry, just a quick question on that last one. I'm sorry, not that it's going to change the voting on this, but South and Northwest, are they going to be needing upgrades with this equipment anytime in the future? South has had some work in the past. Go, yeah, go ahead and give them more specifics than I probably have.
As Dr. Barry said, Olathe South has had recent updates to those systems. Olathe Northwest were, actually, we had a failure in one of the systems after this package. So we are now analyzing Olathe Northwest and we'll bring that at a later date.
Good question. Very good. All right. Back to the wireless networking hardware. Any comments on that, Dr. Barry?
Let's have Rita step to the mic and just give you a brief comment on that since it's a pretty good chunk of money.
We have been investigating our wireless infrastructure for almost a year now, knowing that we have added so many additional devices that we talked about earlier, especially with the one-to-one initiative coming at the middle level and, and what's in the future for the high schools. We recognized quite some time ago that it, the wireless infrastructure, what we call a rip and replace, was in our future. The current infrastructure that we have there was initially purchased in 2000, late 2005, and installed in, in 2006. And so we've, we've gotten a good chunk of time out of that. However, we, we've done some, some additions and replacement and upgrades to that along the way. But it is definitely time to get into a new infrastructure there. And it was part of our 2013 bond list of things that we were going to upgrade.
And so this is touching wireless in every one of the schools?
Every building in the district.
Every building in the district.
We will start, we will actually start, if you approve tonight, we will get started within the next two weeks at the middle schools. We will do them first, knowing that we've got a lot of iPads coming in. We will do them first, knowing that we've got a lot of iPads coming in there, and then, then we'll do the elementary and the high school, and then out to the support buildings. We will do this with our own staff. We're not outsourcing this for installation, and we're very confident with this product and that we can do it efficiently and quickly and get it, get it in and out as, just as soon as possible.
Was it, with part of the requirements, was there a download, I mean, I'm assuming there was a download timing, or how do you, how do you measure the download time and things such as that? But every, all the equipment does different things, right?
They have, and I'm speaking for my network team that is far more skilled in the backend than I am. I can talk it a little bit, but they can give you the, the down nitty-gritty, but they have some very sophisticated tools that they can carry on their laptops and they walk around through all of our buildings. There's maps that they can determine where the best spot is for the access point, after the access point, the point is up. They can measure the exact amount of devices that are currently connected to that access point, what the speed up and down from the internet is. I think I explained in the, in the two reports that you've read, that we had narrowed our investigation to four manufacturers of products. We asked a lot of our vendors, we asked them to bring their equipment out to our schools and completely replace what was there with their hardware. And so we did that at four elementary schools, and we had that running. We installed that between Presidents' Day, between Martin Luther King Holiday and Presidents' Day is when we had those installed. And then we, we took 50, 60, 70 devices into a room just to see exactly how many devices can we connect to that one access point? What's the up and down speed? Put them all on YouTube, did video streaming, did all kinds of connectivity with those devices to really measure the performance. And so you can see from the rubric scale that this wasn't solely based on price, there was a lot of things that went into it because we know when we purchase something like this, we've got to get a lot of, we've got to get a lot of traction out of it. So we want, we want good reliable hardware, we want management tools that will help us know when we've got an outage anywhere, help us know when we need to add access points. We look also at what does this look like to develop a more broad guest network for all of our schools and our buildings so that our community can come in and connect a device and we can remain secure in our network with, with having those guest devices on. Just lots of things that play into that as well as references and, you know, prior installations of this size. So they, they've, they've done a lot of, of background work. Like I said, we've been investigating this for almost, almost a year. So we're, we're very excited and comfortable in this decision that we're bringing to you, and we, we look forward to getting started on this project.
I want to really emphasize that, that as a technology department in the district, we have that focus, that we just didn't bring in a mass approval of a lot of devices and then the system crashes and we have problems and a lot of complaints. It's been done extremely well, so we're pleased.
Rita, one last question again, because of the amount of devices and, and the dollar amount of this, what is, what is the life cycle of, of this wireless equipment? When, what are you anticipating? How long do we have before we'll ever have to upgrade, or when we have to upgrade?
Most often, the life cycle of a network like this is five years. We typically get much more traction out of our hardware than that. As you know, the network that we're, we're taking out has been in place for 10 years with some upgrades along the way. But, but five years in the technology world is a long, long time. And, and the advancements in wireless are just astronomical, they just, it's phenomenal, the things that are coming around with, with wireless technology.
Just looking at the, the rubric that you used to approve the vendor, looks like they sort of almost stood head and shoulders above everybody else.
Yeah, we were very, very pleased, and, and you know, going into a process like that, I'm going to tell you that any of the three manufacturers that we, we brought in four, one of them fell off of our radar early on due to some failure. And so the three that were remaining, I'm going to tell you that, that we could have, we could have been pleased with any one of those three, but the one really stood out to us for the ease that my staff had to manage it, install it, configure it, maintain it. They really felt like it was really a, a step above the others.
Thank you.
Motion?
I move to approve the purchase of, I'm going to pronounce this, Aerohive Wireless Hardware Equipment from AirCorp Wireless Incorporated for $739,999.63 is presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Mr. McCune. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yep.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you. 6.09, Easements at Haven Croft Elementary. These are routine storm water improvement easements?
Just cooperating with the city.
Better do that. Any motions here?
Any reason we can't lump the rest of them together?
It's totally up to you. We got street improvements.
I would like to talk about 6.10 just a little bit. I know that that was kind of a holdover from last year, but can you remind us why we had to, it's cooperating with the city, I realize, but why we had to make those improvements?
I believe when we make improvements at the school, at the same time they ask us to put in a turn lane usually, which helps traffic, so I don't know if it's more than that or not, Greg, I believe that's what it is. We actually are okay with this, it's turned out well. An example would be Frontier Trail, we had to do that when we did some work at the technology building. In the case of Cedar Creek, now cars may not be lined up clear to the eastern part of our district, turning left in there maybe if, if we get some of those taken care of.
Thank you. Okay, so that was 6.10 that you were referring to, Amy, right? The street improvements? Mike, would you like to?
Move to approve 6.09, 6.10, 6.11, and 6.12 and 6.13.
Second.
As presented.
Okay, so I had a motion by, who, just one second, Poland? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Mr. Parker. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to 6.14, Trade Bids for Alatha West High School.
Let's have Greg come to the microphone and share just briefly.
Just a quick update on where we are with bidding for Alatha West High School. Tonight, with these bids that we've submitted, you will have reviewed and approved about 70% of the budget that we have for trade bids. Just yesterday, Tuesday, we received bids for bid package nine. We still have a few bids from bid package eight that we're working on to bring to the next board meeting. That's another 20% of that overall budget for trade bids. It leaves us around 9% that we haven't bid yet, and we feel pretty comfortable that we have enough budget for those nine at this point. So with that, just, this is bid package eight, it's a continuing group of work packages associated with, with the high school. I don't know if you want me to go through it in detail or if you have questions.
I'd like to, you'd go through the alternates if you would, and what was accepted and what was rejected?
Sure. If, if we could, I'll skip bid alternate 13, the support building, for a second and come back to it and sort of speak to it individually. Bid alternate number 21 is insulation and fireproofing, it's a bid alternate. This is a little bit unusual, you see, we've combined, we've set it next to the roofing bid and the lightweight insulating concrete bid. The building code's going to require that in the three-story portion of the building, the roof structure be fireproofed. There are two ways to accomplish that. Typically, there is a metal roof deck that is the structure in a commercial building with roofing applied over the top of it. We can either install a lightweight concrete insulation on top of that roof deck and below the membrane, or we can use a particular type of fireproofed insulation and fire, and then use a fire coating, a spray-on fire coating underneath. Those are sort of two options we have. That's why you'll find that work package number 28, fireproofing, there's only one vendor that provides that, that's this lightweight concrete. It gets compared to bid alternate number 21, which is the alternate path to use the rigid insulation. So we, we took it both ways, so we had multiple op, at least had options on what our costs might be. The bid alternate is lower than the bid, so that's why we're not recommending the fireproofing bid, but taking bid alternate number 21. The others we have is this, there exist solid aluminum doors that go on and outside of a building, and here we're talking about not the entry doors, but these sort of auxiliary doors that you see off of gymnasiums, the solid doors you see around our buildings. You can either do those in aluminum or in steel. Bid alternate number 19 took an alter, took a price for the aluminum and for the steel from two different work packages. The aluminum is the less expensive of the two, and that's why we're recommending that we accept, not the steel. Much, much lower maintenance cost and longer life with the aluminum. There's nothing to paint, they don't rust, so it's a much better product. And then alternate number 22 is the food service equipment for the à la carte serving area. This is a separate serving area inside the building for lunch. It's not the main serving area. This is the same thing, the walls, the flooring, the plumbing, the electrical will all be installed for this area. This is just the equipment that goes in it, and we're really recommending that we delay accepting that until we can make sure that we're in the budget. It's another one of those items. That is the bid alternates.
Greg, I just have a question on bid alternate 21, excuse me, 22, the à la carte versus alternate 13, which is the storage building? So how to, what's the reasoning behind not doing something in the school, in my, as I look at this, for students versus storage?
Storage, if we next jump sort of in the next agenda item, which is, which is, which is basically bid alternate 13. The storage building has always been proposed at that site. If you remember, we've been taking bids all along on that. It goes all the way back to the concrete package that we accepted three months ago. So we've really reached a point now where we either need to decide that we're going to build the building, or we are not going to build the building for this price. Any delay?
For the 221,000?
221,000. Because those prices, because those prices, you know, they have a time limit on them of 90 days, they're beginning to expire, so at any day, we might expect to see an increase in construction cost. Not saying that it's going to happen, but it could happen. It's also on the schedule that we begin this work within the next six weeks. So that's why we need, sort of the schedule is driving us tonight to make the decision to proceed with the storage building. I, I can't stand here and tell you that the storage building's more important than the food service equipment in an à la carte area. I can tell you that we have two and a half years to figure out how to fund the à la carte area. We have tonight to figure out a way to fund this building, or potentially the building becomes more expensive. Right now, it would be my estimation that we're going to be able to fund both, but we really don't know that right at the second. That's why we're recommending that we pause for a few weeks, a few months on the food service equipment and proceed with the building.
The à la carte, that, is that the primary?
It is a secondary serving area separate from the main kitchen. The equipment they were accepting tonight is the kitchen equipment for the main kitchen serving areas and for the food production, for the FACS foods rooms, which use commercial equipment. This is a separate serving area that is provided for, so that we can reduce the number of the lines at the main serving area. And it is not the construction of this space, it's just the equipment.
Now you've got 63,000.
63,000.
Well, that would be my hope, that we will be able to come back and be able to fund that. And I understand we need to get the building built and all the facilities done. We just be able to, we need to be able to justify the public why we did the storage building and not the à la carte.
And I'm really telling you tonight that at the end, it's not a decision of whether we're going to do one or the other, it's can we delay, how long can we delay some of these decisions before we have to make them to make sure we're in budget? There are other sources, there are other opportunities to fund that equipment. We have two and a half years to, to make that decision.
So Greg, with all these bids that have been going on, and, and I don't recall them all though, but the ones that I do recall, it seems like we're probably a little bit ahead of budget. I mean, we're, we're actually, we've spent less than what we've budgeted? Am I right or am I wrong? And I'm just kind of curious from that standpoint.
Here's what I would tell you, we're very close to the budget.
Okay.
We are, we are close enough to the budget that I think we can have, I think we have a strong belief that we will be within the budget. We're that close, we're not so close that we can have a parade. We are still, it is still tight, and we still have packages we have to review, and we have some other unforeseen conditions on the site, anytime you have drill peers and concrete that we have to, to sort of work through. But right now, we're close, as John would say, we're within striking distance.
So, so with the building, you said that if we don't vote on that tonight, pricing and construction costs do sound like they're starting to go up, so we would lose that opportunity. Is it, is that the same case with this à la carte food cask? Is there, is there a possibility that we'll lose this pricing and it may be more down the road?
Well, you know, we're buying the bulk of, we're buying the bulk of the kitchen equipment tonight. This is for the à la carte area. It was just, just happened to me today, it was our normal weekly meeting with the architects and construction managers, and the food service consultant was there. Asked him sort of the same question. Food service equipment tends to be pretty stable in price over time. What drives it is its stainless steel. Anything that affects the price of stainless steel tends to increase the price. We also have the ability, since we're not accepting the alternate night, to put together the same bid package and bid it again. If we don't think that we're getting a fair price, we can always just take that same bid package and go right back out and bid it again, because a $60,000 food service equipment contract's a nice contract. We probably get two or three bidders for that. So I think we, I think we have less concern there than we do with the building, which this just fits now, the footings, the foundations, the masonry work just fits right in with what's going on in the site. They need to sort of get started on that. And to help then with, with the next one, which is a agenda item, the next agenda item after the, is to accept to construct the storage building. Since we have not acted on those prices that we've been receiving, we have to add part of that work to the contracts by change order. And what we're asking you to do is approve the change orders for these first six trades listed, these are the ones from the past. And then tonight, we're approving three of those prices in the bids when you review them.
So are the, the dollars for alternate 13 are not in 6.14?
General trades, roofing, and glass are.
Okay, I see.
That's the current, that's sort of the current one. The portion of them that go to those trades are the cost for cast-in-place concrete, CMU, structural steel, plumbing, HVS, and electrical, we previously sort of passed on. The way we're going to have to get those into the contract now is by change order. And change orders larger than $20,000, you need to approve before we can sign them. And 1, 2, 3, 4, these are larger than $20,000. And then we've put an estimate in for metal studs, joint sealants, and painting, that's our estimate of what we think it'll take to finish the building.
Going back to the kiosk area for the à la carte, is this at a remote site in the building, or is it in the same area as, as where the kids eat, just a, a sort of a remote location in that area?
It is.
I mean, it's not, it's not on the other end of the, of the?
It's on the other end of the commons.
Okay.
It is, it is another locate, it is not adjacent to, it is at another location within the commons that allows them to serve a different group of the community with a, with a slightly different menu, so that we reduce the number of lines at the main facility.
Okay.
So the bid for the alt, bid alternate 13, the support building, 221,000?
Yes.
So if we delayed the building of that building, any idea what it would cost if we waited?
I have no idea.
More than 221,000, is that a fair statement?
Well, prices tend to not go down. So, so I mean, I, I really don't have a crystal ball that can say that. Here's what we know, tonight's our night to buy it for $221,000. Next month, it could be the same. The month after that, it could be the same, it could not be the same. I, I can't, I can't tell you.
Right now, we're getting some economies of scale because we're bidding it all together and?
Bidding it all together, these are the same contractors that are building the main building, they're there right now.
But they just, so they just go over and do this on?
They just go to the north end of the site.
Rather than re, remobilizing and bringing everybody back to, to do it at another time?
Yes, sir.
I'm confident that he's going to be able to work it out, we can get both, because I just said that at the public meeting, that, that he'll work on it that way. If it helps any at all, that I believe, if I'm correct, that the storage building is not just storage for us as a, a school, but it is, has a curricular function as well. The public safety programs that are fire and police and stuff will be using items out on the athletic fields and on that end of the parking lot and so forth, and they need to have storage areas so that each day when they have class, they bring it out. So it does have a curricular function as well.
And, and the building is very functional in that if, if we don't have this building, there's no way to store anything that's in the fields or away from the school building?
The, the fields extend quite a distance away from the building.
It would be dragging stuff back and forth.
This building is at the far end of the nor, of the site, at the northern end of the site, the, or, high school building's at the far south end of the site, the fields The fields are in between. So I mean, to carry the equipment back and forth, and really, to be frank, we didn't provide space in the building to store this equipment in. I mean, that's the primary storage spot for, for the furniture, for the-
Basically, we don't approve this. Somebody's gonna be asking, a lot of people are gonna be asking, why didn't the board approve that storage building?
At this price.
Yeah, especially if I'm dragging equipment back and forth at ten o'clock at night.
All right. And all the other schools have one. All the other schools have one.
Yeah, all right.
For six point one four, I move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second.
I missed what it was, six point one four?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Mr. McCune, for six point one four. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
How about six point one five?
I would move for approval of six point one five, the building of the support building.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Parker, second by Mr. McCune. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, seven point oh one is the Kansas Association of School Boards nominating Legislative Committee and Appointment to the Board of Directors for Region Fifteen. We had had some conversations last meeting about people willing to fill these slots, and now would be the time to make it official. So would you like us to make-
I would, I would. I'd put my name up for the Kansas Legisla-, the Legislative Committee.
Okay, Mr. Poland, I think what we do is everybody offer where they want to serve, and then we'll have a motion. It's a two motion required. Okay. Nominating, anybody?
I would nominate, and I believe that we have the authority to do this, even new coming board members, are we able to nominate them? I would nominate Shannon Wickliffe for the nominating committee for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Sounds good to me. Mr. Shear, would you like to be the Region Fifteen Vice President?
I would. I'd be willing to accept that.
Then I would be happy to nominate you.
I would also like to be a part of legislative consideration.
Okay. Okay, so we have, let's look here real quick. Okay, when we have multiple names for, like we do for legislative, Joy, do we run that separately?
And the first motion will probably be to cease nominations unless there's anybody else that-
Anybody else? Okay, I entertain the motion number one.
I move to cease nominations.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. McCune. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
All right, so we have for, to appoint Shannon Wickliffe for the nominating committee. We need to, I assume, have a vote for the Legislative Committee? So we'll set that aside, and then to appoint Rick Shear for the Board of Directors, Region Fifteen. Is that correct? So let's pull a slide, aside the KASB Legislative Committee, and let's go ahead and approve the first two, Shannon and Rick.
I would move to appoint Shannon Wickliffe to serve as a KASB nominating committee for twenty fifteen, and to appoint Rick Shear to serve as the Board Director, Region Fifteen, Vice President for twenty fifteen.
Second.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, please. Is that Mr. McCune? I'm sorry, yes, Mr. McCune motion, a second by Amy Martin.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
All right, so on the Legislative Committee, how would we do this, guys?
Just making sure that we add this, because I, I do see that on the, the Board of Directors, Vice President, that that's a three-year term, recognizing that from that standpoint, so we wouldn't have to do this in the future. I don't see it here, but it was in the last term, they, the KASB has asked for that to be a two-year term going forward, again, because of the fact of the turnover and things such as that. Is that something that we're able to add here, so that we can follow through with what they're wishing, with, with what they're trying to do with that Legislative Committee? Are we able to add that here, or?
So you want to amend the comment, the term is a three-year?
No, three-year is fine for the Vice President.
Okay.
But I wanted to add that the Legislative Committee is a two-year term.
Okay.
Do we have to add, vote that?
I don't think so. Do you? Do we need to vote on that, Joy? Do you think?
I wouldn't.
Okay, let's just make a note, add that the Legislative is a two-year term. All right, and how about, let's go in alphabetical order?
I would.
Yes.
I have no burning desire to serve on the Legislative Committee. I just, in case nobody else wanted to, I threw my name out there, so I'd-
That was nice.
I'd withdraw my nomination.
Okay, okay. Thank you for offering, though. They pay your gas mileage.
Oh, yeah.
I'd move to appoint Britt McCune to serve on the KASB legislative committee for twenty fifteen.
Second.
Okay, I have, I have, I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Poland for nominating Mr. McCune to serve on the KASB Legislative Committee for a two-year term, so it'd be twenty fifteen-
No, that's just this year.
Say that again?
Legislative.
For the legislative, oh, for-
They're wanting it for two years.
For two years.
So twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, is that what you were saying, Rick?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He didn't tell me that.
Roll call vote, please.
Too late.
I read the sign, friends.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, seven point oh two, Aletha Head Start Continuation Grant. This is part of routine business.
I would move to approve the Head Start Funding Grant Application for twenty sixteen, fifteen, sixteen as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Parker, second by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Parker, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Okay, let's combine our student trips.
Madam President, before we leave that, I would just like to make a recommendation for the, the school board sometime in the fall to get a report from the Director of Head Start, Kim Seel. Just an awesome program. I've been on the Policy Council this year, and it's, when you watch what, how the staff operates over there in the Policy Council, it would be good for the board to be, because we are the oversight of Head Start, it'd be good for the board to get a report and understand what Head Start is and what they do, and, and, and we do have oversights, would be important for the board to understand that. But, like everything in Aletha, just an awesome program. And, and, and Kim Seel really needs to be recognized for that. The myriad of regulation in that program, it's a federal program, so you have a lot of federal bureaucracy involved in that, and she knows all of the ins and outs and whatfor's and whys, and when to have this done and when to have that done, and their onsite inspections are always just exceptional. So it'd be really important, I think, to recognize the program and to, to acknowledge what, the work that they do in the community.
I agree, and I know Dr. Daniels is passionate about that as well, aren't you? Let's combine seven point oh three, seven point oh four, the student trips.
I just have a couple of questions on seven point oh four before we get to, before we vote on that. I don't have any objection to the trip. I, I just noticed that we were using rental van, rental Suburbans for that, and I'm always concerned about who's driving them, what safety, what safety precautions are we taking? The last thing we would want to be, have a van in the median someplace where someone wasn't driving the van correctly. So some assurance on that and how that-
Thank you for your question. Of course, student-staff safety is paramount. This trip, I think you referred to, is to Dallas.
Correct.
It's a nine-hour trip. It's a, it's with experienced drivers who've been on similar trips in the past. It's I thirty-five, basically at Wichita, straight, straight south, so we feel comfortable about that. We do tell our, our drivers to take pit stops frequently. We tell them, don't text and drive, all those, all those types of things as well. The other part of all that, by driving a, a van, it gives us some flexibility once we get to the site, because there are other pit stops we need to make once we get to Dallas. And then finally, the group size, if you notice, is pretty small, and to justify a, a large bus would be almost cost prohibitive. So that's another reason why we've opted to go with the vans.
There are multiple adults as sponsors, so again, that even a trade-off of driving if somebody retired or something like that?
Yeah, it kind of depends upon the trip, and, and actually, next month in June, we've got some other trips that are going south to the Dallas area, and it kind of depends how many kids we have and, and how many adults we take, and genders and all that kind of stuff. But we always, always err on the side of safety.
And only staff members drive? We don't allow parents to drive?
Actually, technically, parents can drive. It is, it is allowable.
I don't know how I feel about that. Do we check that they have a valid license?
We can double-check that. I know in one case, we have a spouse of one of our sponsors who is going, and we'll be, be assisting with the driving.
I would, I would just feel better making sure that anyone who's driving our students, we do some kind of check to make sure that they're in good standing.
I would agree.
Actually, Mr. Hastert does that. Anytime we have a student trip like this, or any of our faculty drives, or our parents require a driver's license and, and do a check before the trip goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. So are their driving records checked? Do we run their motor vehicle report? Okay, thank you.
Motion?
I would move to approve seven dot zero three and seven dot zero four as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Shear, for seven point oh three and seven point oh four. Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right, it brings us to future action items, eight point oh one through eight point twenty-two. Any dialogue on that?
I think just a little peek at the fees from KASB and National School Board. I believe they're flat, so it's always positive, sometimes there've been increases.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Well, and even with that, Dr. Barry, I mean, while, while the KASB membership dues are nineteen thousand, in the past, we used to have a full-time staff person that did that, that the, or at least we had somebody that filled that role, so, and we never backfilled that role, from my understanding. So again, the difference in what we're doing by utilizing them in that, to utilize them that, from that, from a legislative standpoint, makes a lot more sense, a lot more economical for us. The amount of information we get from both associations and the services, it's a bargain. It really is.
I noticed we have a lot of student trips on here, and we approved quite a few tonight. And I'm wondering, and, and I see great value in all of these student trips, and so I'm not suggesting that we change it, but I do think it's kind of important to look at what the district is spending on these, both as far as what we have parents raising, what principals are choosing to spend from their building funds, and what the district is sponsoring. Because, you know, we're looking at really tightening our belts over the next two years, and so I think it's just important that, that we take a look at this and that the community realizes that these are experiences that are important for our kids, and, and it's important that we find a way to continue to do it, and that there is a cost that's associated. Any other comments? All right, that brings us to our written information.
Just in regards to Ms. Martin's comments in regard to trips, that's been a constant question for sixteen years, and some years back, we reduced the trips by eliminating international trips, which, for safety reasons and also for a purpose of cost. So, so the district has taken some positive steps in that, in that regard, and I think it's important. The kids work for these opportunities, and it's nice to be able to provide them, but again, that we need to find some balance on this.
I, I absolutely agree. I think, I have three students who all had tremendous benefit from going on these trips, and so I do see the value, but I think it's important that the community knows that a lot of our learning doesn't necessarily take place in the classroom, and it's still important that we find ways to do things like this.
Dr. Barry, I think the policy is if it's a, if, if the student qualified for the trip for, through a state competition like the debate team, then, then the district would participate in that.
We have a special line item for state, national competitions and so forth, yes.
Okay.
Great.
But if, but if it's like a van trip, then that's something that would be-
If it's an elective performance, then it's fundraising by the school and individuals.
Okay.
Wonderful. Okay, the Head Start Report you received, and any topics for discussion? Dr. Banikowski, I was excited to see the summer conference. It looks really exciting. If, if board members wanted to attend anything, could they?
If any, if any session, if you'd like to attend, just let us know, we'll connect.
Great. Continuing Ed never stops.[1517.73]
However, they also welcome existing board members to participate and, you know, bone up a little bit. Yeah. And I believe it's in Topeka is the closest one?
Yeah, June twentieth.
June twentieth?
Maybe Harlan and Debbie could consider that.
You could teach it. They could teach it, that's for sure. Those old board members.
Yeah.
Anything else? I'll pitch it to you, Dr. Barry.
Yeah, just a few comments. Today, May seventh, has been circled on the calendar by some because today, a, a group of attorneys representing certain school districts in Kansas appeared before a three-judge panel in Topeka, uh, on the opposite side, attorneys for the state. And so this is the court case finally that is to be heard again. The immediate thing that was added, uh, this spring and that they're taking up first is my understanding, is the, uh, the new block grant, um, which was really known as Senate Bill Seven. Uh, the plaintiff's school districts think it's unconstitutional and so that has to be decided because that's the new plan that's in place right now, moving forward with the state. As you know, that three-panel judge panel had already, uh, ruled that they thought the, uh, funding was inequitable across the state and required more state aid. And since then, the formula has changed a little bit and so I think that's gonna be why it's being brought back before. So I don't know how soon we will hear anything, uh, and they're still on a, still on appeal to the, uh, State Supreme Court, but anyway, it's starting to at least be handled. Uh, it, it, you know, it's gotta settle things out for everybody so we can move forward. It was also exciting this morning, I had the chance, along with a few other staff members, to be a part of the unveiling of a training station at our Fire Safety Division right here in Olathe. Our construction trades class built a training device for the firefighters. It is a, basically, it's not three stories in terms of a building, but it's three different levels, a maze, M-A-Z-E, that they crawl through with their backpacks on, learning to get adjusted to breathing with that equipment, uh, while they're struggling physically and there's barriers that are, that occur in there that they can place in. It, it's unique in the country in that they also designed it with windows that can be opened up for the instructor to look in and see how the firefighter's doing and to give instruction. Uh, so it's really neat, th- those kids are so proud today and w- once the official ceremony was over, about fifteen kids climbed all over this thing like it was a jungle gym, uh, but very proud and, and it's very well constructed. So construction trades, really cool that they're giving a hands-on experience for something that's that useful.